Hello, good afternoon everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Policy Committee. My name is councillor Julie Grokut and I will be chairing the meeting this afternoon. You're all very welcome, especially our three members of the public who attended to ask questions this afternoon. Thank you for coming along. The meeting today is open to the public and is being webcast. Besides having a number of questions, we also have two petitions at the meeting today. The agenda and reports for today's meeting are available on the council's website and a small amount of paper copies are also available. Can I please request that mobile telephones and other such electronic equipment are on silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test for today's meeting. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. Can I please ask members of the committee in turn to introduce themselves, starting with councillor Iggbell?
Thanks Chair, I'm councillor Mazraik Bell, I represent Darnall Ward. I'm also the co-chair of this committee.
Good afternoon, I'm Christine Gilligan-Cubbo, I'm a councillor for Hillsborough Ward and I'm the deputy chair of this committee.
Good afternoon, my name's councillor Mike Chaplin, I represent Southie Ward and today I am substituting for councillor Diane Hurst, who cannot be with us.
Hi, I'm Craig Gumbel-Pew, I'm councillor for East Epsom Street Ward.
Hello, I'm councillor Ruth Mursrow, representing City Ward.
I'm councillor Richard Shaw, councillor for Beechfin Green Hill Ward.
Councillor Andrew Sangar, councillor for Forward Ward and also the group spokesperson on this committee.
Councillor Eunice Auckland, councillor for Graves Park Ward.
Thank you members, can I also ask officers who are present to introduce themselves, please?
Sarah Bennett, Assistant Director of Legal and Governance.
I'm Ryan Key with Under Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Good afternoon everyone, Will Stewart, Director of Investment, Climate Change and Planning.
Sarah Hyde, Danfossic Services.
Thank you everyone, welcome to... Officers are presenting papers at the appropriate time on the agenda if that's okay. Just to make everyone aware, we have decided that item eight on the agenda will be considered as the last item of business this afternoon. And before I move on, I would just like to make a statement on behalf of the committee about the issues that are facing all of us in Sheffield at this moment in time with relation to public transport and the bus services. All members of the Transport, Regeneration and Climate Committee are deeply concerned about the potential for bus cuts in Sheffield. Buses play a crucial role in allowing people of Sheffield to travel to work, to school, to shop, visit relatives and to access local facilities. We fully appreciate that for some buses are a lifeline, particularly where they serve more of our isolated communities. Buses also allow Sheffield to become more sustainable through providing greener public transport choices, helping us to meet our climate change and air quality commitments. This is why further bus cuts would be so damaging for our city and it is why it is so disappointing to hear that First Group in South Yorkshire have indicated that they will not be taking up the offer of the bus recovery funding from the government. As many of you will know, the majority of buses in Sheffield are run by private operators with some funding through the South Yorkshire Mayoral Combined Authority. The council has no direct control over buses in Sheffield. Nevertheless, members and officers are working closely with the new mayor for South Yorkshire, Oliver Copard, and his team to explore all avenues to ensure the impacts of these bus cuts are minimised. Additional funding has already been provided by the MCA to keep school services going and further funding is being considered to support as many services as possible in Sheffield and throughout South Yorkshire. Through these discussions, we will be keen to ensure value for money and any additional public funding required. Sheffield City Council has established a dedicated officer command group to monitor the ongoing bus situation and representatives from education, communities and transport meet regularly to ensure that information can be assessed and communication plans can be updated. As Sheffield councillors, we will continue to do all we can, lobby for better bus services and we hope that government will step up its commitment to fund buses in Sheffield. Thank you for that. Can I move to item two on the agenda, please, which is apologies for absence.
Yes Chair, just one apology from councillor Diane Hurst.
Thank you, that's noted. Item three is the exclusion of public and press. Please can we note that item eight on the agenda includes a two-part report that is not available to the public and press because it contains exempt information. If members of the committee wish to discuss the information in this restricted report, members of the public and press will be kindly asked to leave the meeting at this point and we will halt the webcast. Is that okay with members, please? Thank you. Item four is declarations of interest. Can I ask whether any members wish to declare any items of interest on business of the agenda, please? Councillor Sangar.
Thank you Chair, item 11, Shelsmore Gateway, it's a personal interest. My son is purchasing a flat in Kilham Island which is in the area affected, but I still think I can, I'll still take part in a round vote, it's just a personal interest. Thanks Chair.
Thank you, that's noted, are there any others, please? Thank you. Item five is minutes of the previous meeting, at page 11 in the agenda page. Can we approve the minutes of the meeting of the 15th of June, please? All happy? Yes? Thank you members. Councillors.
A query on page 20. Item four at the bottom of 7.2 agrees to commission work from officers to develop and implement plans to mitigate overspends, blah blah blah, and income generation. This doesn't appear to have been included in the work plan.
Chair, the budget monitoring report are included in the work programme, they will come every month. So we do have month four on, if that's what you're talking about.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
The budget monitoring report, is it under month one, is that what you're talking about, on the previous minutes?
It's item 7.2 on page 20 and it's number four at the bottom of the page. So we agreed to discuss opportunities for income generation, but this doesn't appear to have been carried over into the work plan as far as I can see. If it has, could you point me to where in case I've missed it?
I'll have a look at it and make sure it's put on there if it's not there.
Sorry, I can't...
I'll make sure that it's put on there if it's not.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Any other points on the agenda, please? With that clarification, then are we all happy to agree, please? Thank you. Item six on the agenda is public questions and petitions. We have received two petitions, but unfortunately neither of the petitioners are here to speak to them today, so we will provide written answers just for information. One petition was requesting alterations to the junction of Rhythm Valley Road and the other was a petition requesting a public pedestrian crossing on Cross Hill Street. So we will make sure that the petitioners do get written responses to those and the information will be provided on the website. Moving on to our first, our public questions, our first questioner is Lindy Stone. Lindy, would you care to take the microphone there, please? Thank you.
Thank you Chair for allowing me to come and ask this question. My name's Lindy Stone, I'm a resident in Green Hill in Sheffield and I'm also coordinator of Sheffield Friends of the Earth, but I'm here to speak this time on behalf of the South Yorkshire Climate Alliance. Addressing the urgent demands of the current energy crisis must not drain away attention from the critical need to improve our renewable energy generation. We know that solar and onshore wind generation is the cheapest, the most secure and the most swiftly developed electric energy that we can have and that's a fact noted and acted on by many of our European neighbours in their response to the current crisis. Many local authorities in the UK have already taken steps to boost renewable energy generation, such as Cambridgeshire, who are developing solar farms, Stroud, which is using the vehicle of its local plan to identify appropriate sites for renewable energy generation, and Warrington Council, which is investing in renewable energy through the use of community municipal bonds. All these examples and more can be found on a Friends of the Earth and Ashton report, which has 40 plus examples of local authority action on climate change, which I would recommend to all of you. In the light of the actions that are taken elsewhere and the urgency of the situation, what steps are Sheffield City Council taking to secure future renewable energy generation for the needs of residents and also to play our part in reducing carbon emissions?
Thank you Lindy. The forthcoming draft Sheffield Plan will include policies relating to renewable energy generation, carbon reduction and other requirements relating to sustainable design. The draft plan is due to be considered by this committee on the 3rd of November. I think it's also worth you've note that the Sheffield Labour Council's budget amendment last year provided an extra £3.5 million for local renewable energy and as part of our review of ethical procurement, we are also looking at how we can make it much easier for renewable firms to be part of our procurement. Thank you very much for your question, thank you. Our next questioner, please, is Michael Halliwell.
I wish to ask the committee a question on behalf of Sheffield residents that do not have off-street parking and own an electric vehicle. What are the council's plans for them to have the ability to charge their vehicle at home, this being the easiest and most cost-effective way to charge? Have any types of charging solutions been approved or near approval? Trojan Energy have had trials with other cities in the UK and I'm assured you're already aware of, you're already aware. Barnet Council recently signed a contract with Trojan to install their chargers as their preferred solution. This solution seems to be the best, in my view, as when not charging there is no equipment left in the street or pavement, leaving no trip hazard and no obstruction on the pavement, which have been the council's main concerns throughout my own inquiries into installing a charging facility. As the council want to be net zero by 2030, I see this as a problem that needs addressing as a matter of urgency. I am willing to be a trial participant in our own city and looking forward to seeing your solutions to this problem.
Thank you for the question, Mr Halliwell. Charging electric vehicles at home is convenient and offers potential benefits around the cost of electricity and impact on the grid. However, on-street solutions for residents without off-street parking have a number of issues which must be considered, including for example, the potential to limit future uses of the public highway and more challenging business cases. They may also not be available to all residents, for example, many may not be able to park outside their house or are limited by other infrastructure above or under the ground. Within the report that is proposed, that the rollout of residential charging infrastructure will be based around a local charging hub model, public EV charging units located to serve nearby residents on a highway, in a local car park or other local site. While Sheffield's lamp columns are mainly at the rear of the footway, we understand that there are many technical issues and we are looking at a trial to understand the potential for street lamp column charging to be included within this model. Priority however, must be given to ensuring that access to and the use of pavements is not impeded and safety of pedestrians is not jeopardised. Innovative on-street home charging solutions will continue to be investigated and may be used in addition to the local hub model once further developed. Cable channels, GoLance-type solutions, such as that referred to, will be kept under review as the outcomes of those trials are further understood. Technology developed and practical issues explored, for example, issues around ownership, maintenance, licensing and planning need to be resolved before any solutions could be approved. Thank you very much for your question.
Hello everyone, I'm John Wright and I live in Crooks within the active neighbourhood area. I live next to Westways School on a road that doesn't have parking restrictions, unlike Springhill School Road and others, and hasn't been included in the school-street scheme. With the active neighbourhood, this has exacerbated parking problems on my road, particularly during school drop-off times. I support the aims of the active neighbourhood, but I worry that this scheme didn't have enough community engagement in its design. If there had been more, I would have asked for my role and others like it that have been missed out by both sets of restrictions to have been included in the school-street scheme. I'm disappointed that I didn't get the chance to share my views when the scheme was being planned. Would the Chair give a view on the need for more community engagement and co-design with active neighbourhood schemes to increase the chances of them being successful? And, some parts of the Crooks and Walkley scheme haven't yet been implemented, we are nearly three months on from when the revised Experimental Traffic Regulation Order went live on June 23rd. What is happening with the outstanding implementation work and are there any plans to extend the ETRO or the six-month consultation?
Thank you for the question. I do say your concerns about the level and quality of consultation. I understand that councillors in Crooks and Walkley have spoken to local residents at extra consultation events that they organised. For any future schemes like this, I agree that more community co-creation and co-design needs to be a standard and that we aspire to making full use of the council's public engagement toolkit to ensure that schemes are shaped by the work of our communities. The engagement of Crooks and Walkley scheme was signed off by our predecessor, but we would welcome your feedback and will be happy to discuss this further with you and then make sure that we are included in any consultation and monitoring. There is the potential to extend the ETRO for another six months, however, speaking in my personal capacity, this is something that I would need to work through with my colleagues to be convinced that there is a need to do it. I don't believe that there is at present reasons why this should go ahead, but that is work in progress at the moment. Crucially, we can't apply at one, any size fits all approach to what may work in one area and may not work in another area and the council needs to be flexible to adapt and listen to local needs. Thank you for your question. Councillor Iggbell, sorry.
Sorry for the interruption, just picking up the point the gentleman's raised, am I allowed to ask something? Because I don't know where it'd fit on the agenda. I mean, I share what's been said, I know a number of us cross-party have been to some of these events, we'd asked for the local engagement events that had taken place over the summer and as you said Chair, when we'd initially gone out for consultation, it was a pandemic, so we had to use the tools that we had at our disposal. And as the questioner has said Chair, that in some cases, all the interventions haven't gone in. If we're now proposing an extension of a new ETRO, I would say we pause. It's important that A, we go back and do further engagement, understand where the bits haven't been, the interventions haven't gone in, it'd be good to understand when those interventions would go in before we start doing another ETRO. So probably this is the first time this has happened in this committee. I mean, I'd be asking for a pause, I'd ask if this committee would support a recommendation not to go out with this revised ETRO, so the interventions that need to be implemented need to understand why they haven't gone in. So for me, I'd ask for a pause as being requested by the member of the public, I think.
Thank you councillor Iggbell, councillor Sangar.
Thank you Chair, and I would say thank you to Mr Wright for his question, but I'm going to like to support councillor Iggbell in this proposal. As Chair of South West Lac, I had a walkabout on Friday with the three Crooks and Cross Paul councillors, I think we were, you know, the three of them pointed out to myself and council officers, you know, what was proposed and, you know, areas where they had yet to be implemented and, as I say, places where they'd been implemented, but the three councillors cross-party were, you know, had concerns, so I, you know, and we heard from local residents, we heard from local residents who were very supportive of the scheme and just wanted to crack on and we also heard from residents who were concerned about how, you know, the lack of consultation, which as councillor Iggbell and yourself as Chair have said, was driven by Covid. I mean, Covid was the problem here, that we were not able to use the full toolkit in terms of consultation. So I think with that in mind, I think I will support councillor Iggbell's recommendation, Chair, thank you.
Thank you councillor Sangar. Has anyone else got any comments they would like to make, please? Councillor Mazraik.
Yeah, just wondering why the particular interventions haven't been implemented so far? Would we be able to be given information on that before making any decision as to whether to pause or continue?
But councillor Iggbell, then I think I need to bring Tom in, if I may, please.
Yeah, I've had the opportunity to read the reports and I've read them, once I'd picked up Mr Wright's question. I mean, if we go back when these schemes were proposed, when we went out for consultation because it was a pandemic, we had to use digital means and in a sense, when you dig deeper on the responses, it's probably just over 10% of residents in Crooks and Walkley that have responded. For me, and paraphrasing what councillor Sangar said, you know, the toolkit of good practice is that, you know, each step of the way we engage, the community helps us to co-design and co-produce and that's the segment for me that's missing. We did try and go back in June, June and July to engage with the public and three and a half months on, and for whatever reason, the interventions haven't gone in, there's supply chain issues across the world and so forth, don't want to go into that detail, but I think this is an opportune time for us to reflect, evaluate what's gone in, what needs to go in, but to bring in something new at this stage, Chair, I wouldn't recommend that, I'd pause that, I'd look at how do we get what needs to go in and work with the community and businesses, because having been up there, businesses were saying to us as well that, you know, we weren't engaged. So for me, as I said earlier, put a pause, let's not go ahead with the revised ETRO, because there's only several months left regarding the interventions that should have gone in, do an evaluation, understand where we're at and take it from there. And the key bit for me through you Chair, is ensuring that local councillors are also involved in that process. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Iggbell. Tom, could I ask you to introduce yourselves and then come in, please?
Good afternoon everybody, I'm Tom Finnegan-Smith, I'm the Head of Strategic Transport Sustainability In terms of the current position with the Active Travel Neighbourhood schemes, the one in Crooks and Walkley and the one in Nether Edge are currently both part implemented under an existing Experimental Traffic Order. That Experimental Traffic Order has covered the vast majority of the measures in each of those areas. At the moment, there has been some discussions around the school-street in Crooks and Walkley and its interaction with the Active Travel Neighbourhood, based on some feedback we've had whilst that scheme's been live. In terms of a pause, I think it's probably fair to say that we are in a period and have been in a period of understanding some of the feedback that we've received whilst the scheme has been in place, but there is a need for a kind of a position on the further measures. So we are about to meet with local ward members and members, some members of the committee next week to discuss that very issue. In terms of Experimental Traffic Orders, they can run up to 18 months and measures can be implemented within that period and reviewed. So, you know, as part of the process of the Experimental Traffic Order being live, we can remove certain aspects of the scheme and we can promote changes to that if that's required. So we have done that as part of the early stages of the Active Travel Neighbourhood in Crooks and Walkley and the next stage really is to kind of use that period of reflection that we've already had and the feedback that we've already had to make a decision in terms of the next stage. In terms of some of the measures that can go in, there is already a live Experimental Traffic Order to cover those measures. That position would only change if we want to effectively add additional things in. So at the moment, we have a position where we've got a scheme that's live, we've already made some amendments to it and there is a need to effectively finalise the position around the trial. With the scheme being effectively part implemented and not all of those measures being in, there is obviously kind of a need for us to analyse the scheme and its full essence. So in terms of pausing and not moving forward at all, I think what we would need to do is, if that is a position that the committee want to take, that we would need to present something formally to you to set out those implications if the meetings and discussions next week head towards that position. But at the moment, there is a live traffic order that does cover all of the measures apart from a slight amendment to the school-street within the Crooks and Active Travel Neighbourhood.
Thank you Tom, I suppose a number of things there then. The time that, you know, the time that this has, the ETRO has been in the time that it could be in, the fact that issues, not all of the features are implemented, you know, I suppose is very confusing for the public in terms of we're asking them to comment and give feedback on particular aspects of the scheme when actually that could be counterproductive to what is the fuller part of the scheme when all of the parts are implemented. So I can quite understand why residents are both concerned and confused by that. So the issue for me then, listening carefully to what everyone's said on this this afternoon is, should we be looking to... should we be looking to have the meeting that you've suggested next week with members and then making a decision from there as to whether we pause it or not? I mean, I'm assuming nothing is going to be done between now and then in terms of changes and making a definitive decision on that next week when we've spoken to members who presumably are working closely with residents that affected, to decide what would be the way forward? Would that be more pragmatic or do we just need to say that we need to pause it today? I've got councillor Ickbell then, councillor Gambell.
It depends on the revised ETRO because from my understanding, if that goes out for consultation, in a sense, you're resetting the clock. That's my concern. The second concern, as I've said, having been at Netheredge, Walkley and Crooks dropping sessions, either you for or against, it's just not been clear. And with the interventions not going in the sequence and the timetable, again, that has confused matters even further. So for me, we've got an opportunity today as a committee to pause that based on what Mr Wright has said today. Having spoken to my colleagues in both those wards, I'd be asking for that pause, the opportunity to reflect. Let's go back and speak to both businesses and residents and keep them on board. That's the key bit for me, Chair. Having the community on board will ensure the success of this scheme. And I think now is that time to just pause and reflect. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Julie. Yeah, echoing what Maz has just said, we want to take people with us on these schemes. It's crucial that we encourage people to get out of their cars as far as possible to help us achieve our goal of reaching net zero in a timely fashion. So with these initial schemes, it's really important that we don't mess up the public engagement, that we keep people with us. I've spoken to my Labour Ward colleagues in Crooks and Crosspool, councillors Parek and councillor Milsom. What they're saying very clearly is that they think it would be really damaging in terms of public engagement if a fresh ETRO was to be submitted because that would reset the consultation period. So I think what I would like us to do today as a committee will be to agree that there should be no fresh or amended ETRO submitted until, as officers have said, the due paperwork and discussion and facts have been laid before this committee at a subsequent meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got councillor Shaw.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just trying to kind of understand the implications of what's suggested for the pause because it sounds like we've got this existing ETRO that's still got the best part of 18 months to run. That's quite a long time for, you know, for consultation to take place and to consider things. But I mean, if the scheme has not yet been implemented, how can, how can the, how can you properly consult on something that's not yet been fully implemented? Are the outstanding bits due to go in or has there been, have there been changes to design that says, you know, they're not necessary now? So that's why I'm kind of trying to understand, are these things still to go in? Have they not? And is, given that we've still got an 18-month consultation period, is a pause necessary? Because I'm just trying to understand kind of what the point is because we've still got quite a bit of time for this scheme to go on. I'd just like some kind of clarity.
I'll take councillor Opland and then I'll bring you back in, Tom, if that's okay.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm sorry to stick in now with my question. The consultation period lasts for six months on an ETRO, but the ETRO can last for up to 18 months, is my understanding. So my first question is, why all the bits that were meant to be part of the original ETRO weren't? Why aren't they in place? Because I do accept that the period for consultation until November, I think, has been shortened and we're asking people to comment on something that's not been completed yet. So it seems to me a bit of a false prospectus there. But on the other hand, an ETRO, a different one, is a matter for officer delegation. Officers can put it forward. So I think understanding what the co-chair is saying, essentially the committee would be saying in the light of the public question, if it was our decision, we'd be minded not to approve a further ETRO whilst the existing ETRO is still in place. That's, I think, what it amounts to. And we'd rather that our lead officer doesn't go away, make a different ETRO for now. It's a view we're expressing as such. Because in order for us to make an actual decision, we'd need a bit of paper with legal and financial implications and all the rest of it on there. So I guess my question, and members who know this a lot better than I do, please forgive me because sitting here I'm thinking, well, my original question would be, well, why haven't finished it off as originally set out? And then, I appreciate we can amend it as we go through, but the public would at least know what they were being asked to think about at the start during the implementation period. If the public haven't had a proper chance to engage and remember, you'll upset, you know, you'll upset a number of people, whatever you do and wherever you put the boundaries on these schemes, people in it or out it, will have different views on it. But if we haven't had a chance to properly consult, then I think that's what we need to get right first. Is that it?
Tom.
Thank you, Chair. So just to respond to some of the comments that have been made. Within the existing Experimental Traffic Regulation Order, the vast majority of the measures that have still not been implemented in Crooks are covered with that existing ETRO. Now, the ETRO lasts for up to 18 months. The first six months are the statutory consultation period. We could accept comments and feedback beyond that point. And, you know, in terms of, you know, our commitment to undertake engagement and kind of go out into the community and seek some of that feedback, then it would be our commitment to do that beyond the six months as part of the review. But they can last for up to 18 months before a decision would need to be made on whether you're retaining them permanently, whether you're making final changes in a final scheme or whether, for whatever reason, a scheme is not going to be retained on a permanent basis. So the position we're in at the moment, there is an existing ETRO that covers the measures that are still to go in. I think there is one aspect around the school street where, again, from local feedback on that scheme, we could make a standalone school street amended ETRO. So I guess the key issue really is around the clock ticking that's been mentioned. So if we promoted a new ETRO to effectively complement the scheme that's in and introduce the additional scheme, aspects of the scheme that aren't yet implemented, it means that there is that full six-month statutory period for full engagement and consultation and then a decision within the next 18 months. But we could still introduce the measures now, seek that feedback, undertake engagement in advance of those measures going in and we could take a view within the 18-months period that exists at the moment for the existing order. So effectively, it's whether there is a requirement to promote it as a further six-month statutory period for consultation or to do it as part of the existing order. Now, you know, this is one of the reasons why we've kind of arranged the meeting for next week, to sit down with local members, to have those full discussions, to seek and gauge a view in terms of what might be the best approach. In terms of the reason why measures haven't gone in, there were some challenges in terms of implementing some of the measures. Naturally, parking in residential streets where people are reliant predominantly on street parking does mean that it can be a challenge to introduce measures. But again, there are mechanisms for us to kind of ensure that a delivery programme is tighter and we'd be working on that with AME to roll that out for the delivery of those additional measures.
Thank you, Tom. I've got councillor Ickbell then, councillor Mazra.
Yeah, I'm not going to repeat everything I said earlier, Chair. I want to stick to what I've said, but if we follow your statement regarding the buses, again, a key integral part of ensuring Active Travel neighbourhoods works is public transport. And the statement you read out today means Sheffield is facing further cuts. I mean, it'd be good to, I had, again, I think it was councillor Ruth Milsom at some silly point last night where she'd been contacted by a resident, I think it was the 81 bus, on October the 2nd. That community loses that bus and it seems like first letting folks, bus drivers are letting passengers know, but we're not getting that information. So again, you know, that was a key fundamental aspect of active travel. And as I've said, equal to that is public engagement. And as I said, the pandemic prevented that. But when we did go out, and I encourage all our committee members to read the reports when you get a few moments, but we'd gone out, as I said, just over 10% have responded. When we designed the interventions, we should have gone out then and said to that community, this is what's being proposed, have your say, you could have tweaked and so forth. Unfortunately, that didn't happen and we tried to do that in June and with interventions going in, some not going in, it is a bit of a mess. And with Tom, on parking, I was asked, you know, one of the tools we can use is tow people's cars away. I just can't sign up to that. That is, I just couldn't, that's never going to happen. So for me, I think the key bit is we're all supportive of the active travel. We want them to be rolled out across the city. And if we're going to be using them, you know, if Crooks, Walkley, I mean, I won't mention what's happening at Netheredge, if, you know, if those residents, if you're for or against are saying, you know, we don't understand, it's going to be very difficult for us as politicians to go out in other neighbourhoods and try and sell something where people have already, in a sense, made up their mind. So again, the key point here is I would pause, work with the councillors, work with the residents and the business to ensure that this scheme is a success so we can roll it out across the city, Chair. Thank you. And thank you councillor Sangar for supporting my recommendation. Thank you.
Councillor Mazra.
Yeah, it sounds really positive that we can accept comments and feedback beyond the six-month point under the existing scheme and I believe that these schemes need time to bed in properly. A quick question, in your experience of these schemes, how long do they take to properly bed in so that people, so that we start to see long-term behavioural change and modal shift?
So through the chair, I think what we find is that effectively, that kind of period of change when a scheme is implemented, that there is that concern, immediate concern. And I think we've seen that naturally in the two areas where we've introduced the schemes in Sheffield. It does make an impact on the people that live in those areas who are used to travelling through their communities in a certain way. But access to all properties and businesses is always maintained. It just might mean that it might be a more attractive option for people to consider whether they're going to be using their private cars or not. And that period does take some time of adjustment and, you know, not everybody always likes them, you know, after a short period of time. But what we find is that that settling in period, kind of probably in line with, you know, the experimented all the time period, is a suitable period of time for us to consider, you know, the kind of effect of these schemes in local areas. And again, you know, we're not saying by any means that we're going to get it right every time. And there are, will be things that we will want to improve on next time and can learn from our experience of rolling out these two areas as the first ones really in Sheffield that we've aligned together. The issue there though is that at the moment, without implementing some of the schemes as fully as we think that they probably need to be, then the kind of robustness of our understanding of the schemes and the community's response to what the full scheme would be is going to be very limited unless we kind of look collectively at how we can implement them and have a period of time so that we can analyse and kind of hear from the community what that full scheme really, really means to them and their community.
Thank you, Tom. Just two sort of final questions from me, I suppose. One is, and I suppose I'm looking to Sarah for the answer for this, sorry. Can we lawfully put a pause on an ETRO? I think we just need some clarification on that. And the second point would be, if we did ask, because bearing in mind it is a delegated decision to officers, so we would be asking you to do that if that was the will of the committee, how long do you think we would need to pause for before we could get things back on track? So there's one for Sarah, one for Tom there, I think, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'm actually thinking of offering councillor Auckland a job. This has sort of answered your question in advance, really, Chair. It is a delegated officer decision. So this committee absolutely can ask officers to take into account its views before deciding how to proceed and making any officer decisions. But it is an officer decision under the constitution. So you can't require officers to pause, but you could ask them to take into account the views that you've expressed today and the concerns raised by the member of the public who asked the original question.
Thanks, Chair. I guess I'm going to throw something into the mix in terms of pause and reflection. So I think we're in a period of reflection in this scheme. We've undertaken as officers kind of an analysis and a review of what's already in, what is outstanding, what the immediate feedback from consultation and events have been and had conversations with local members. As I mentioned earlier, we've got a meeting next week to kind of effectively set out clearly in terms of what that period of reflection means, in terms of what we're intending to move forward with. A pause effectively has been in place in terms of rolling out those additional measures. A formal pause and do not implement additional aspects of the ETRO that has already been advertised, I think is a slightly different thing. So again, I'll come back to the point that we have a meeting next week where I think the kind of the chairs of this committee, deputy chair and councillor Sangar have been invited alongside ward members to effectively consider that reflection and, you know, the option to move that forward and how we would implement that. So if arising from that, there's a kind of formal need for a more considered pause, then I think that's probably a formal decision. In October, thanks, Matt, we also have some of the data. So a key part of this is obviously the community engagement that we have. But our analysis also includes surveys of traffic within these Active Travel neighbourhoods. We'll get some of that information back in October. And again, it says hopefully on this, but, you know, I think that's our planned timeline. The issue for us is that that kind of most immediate position around rolling out the rest of these measures is a discussion we were intending on having next week.
Thank you, Tom. But councillor Ickbell then, councillor Gambell, please.
Yeah, the officers, delegation, I mean, Tom has said, and he's been present and grateful to his officers. We went out and did the sessions evening, weekend. So the key bit for me is if the constitution doesn't allow us as members, we probably need to revisit the constitution as well. But as I said, this is the request. the constitution as well. But as I said, this is the request we've made and it's down to the officer, in a sense, to take that on board.
Councillor Gamble-Pew then councillor Mazzara.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to be as clear as I can be that from my discussions with Minesh and Ruth, the Labour councillors in Crooks and Crosspool, what they're asking for is not for a pause to the current measures and the current ETRO, but a pause on any moves to apply for an amended ETRO. Their view, as the local ward councillors, is that that would cause confusion and be detrimental to public buying for the scheme, which strategically, we have to take a view as a policy committee strategically about what's in the best interest of rolling out this policy of low-traffic neighbourhoods across the city. And key to that is public buying. So we've got, I think, it's a no-brainer that we have that very, very clear and simple request from ward councillors on a ward issue, that we have to back them up as a committee. That's what I'm supporting. That's why I'm hearing the proposal from the co-chair. And that's why I would like the committee to approve. I'd like to make an additional point, which Mazzar also just alluded to, which is about decision-making and governance within this council. We've just gone through the biggest change to governance and decision-making, you know, of our lifetime. We're supposed to be living in this historic golden new era of every councillor in every ward being able to be fully participating in democratic decision-making. We do have a review of governance coming up. And can I ask for this committee to formally raise with that governance review this issue of delegated powers of officers? Because delegated authority comes from the sovereign body of this local authority, which is council, made up of elected councillors. The purpose of delegated authority is to ensure that decisions can be made and the function of the council can continue effectively, in line with the political direction that we as elected members set. It should be within the jurisdiction of the council or committees of the council to reserve any decisions that are otherwise delegated. So we need to make sure that the governance review looks at that issue. Because if full council wants to reserve a decision that's otherwise delegated to a committee, they are within their power as council to do so. Committees also should be able to reserve decisions that are otherwise delegated to officers. Otherwise, the role of local elected members is diminished to a point where it's ridiculous. So can I just, through you, Chair, can we check whether there is a consent of this committee that we formally raise that with the governance review?
Councillor Mazzara.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what the data says before being asked to make any decision on pausing the scheme in any way. I'd like to hear what the data says first, please. And that's coming out in October, I think you said?
Yeah. Councillor Sangor.
Yeah, I mean, I just really wanted to follow up what councillor Ickbell and councillor Gamble-Pew had said. I mean, clearly, my involvement in this was when I heard about it in terms of as a South West Lac chair at the time in February, March. And there was clearly a lot of emails backwards and forwards. We as a Lac did not, were not involved in the consultation. As councillor Ickbell has said, we're very grateful to transport officers for coming out in June and hearing from local residents. And that was something that, you know, we facilitated in terms of South West Lac. It is quite clear both from those three sessions but from subsequent events that the three Crooks and Crosspool councillors, i.e. the two Labour councillors and the one Lib Dem councillor, are not happy with, you know, with the scheme and the consultation. And that's really the point councillor Gamble-Pew is making. So I'm happy to back that up. As I say, we as South West Lac have not been involved in terms of the Walkley element of the scheme. And so I wouldn't want to comment on that. But my understanding is that Walkley councillors have, you know, similar concerns. In terms of councillor Gamble-Pew's wider point, I mean, clearly, it's a big change for all of us to go from a cabinet system that we'd operated for 20 years to a committee system. And the whole idea was that we wouldn't increase officer delegation. But clearly, this is an area where the previous scheme, because we'd operated it for 20 years, members were well aware of how you influence the process and that the processes are going to be different. I think it's really important that the governance committee, you know, take on board the challenges of local highway schemes and particularly active travel schemes, because active neighbourhood schemes. Because I think all three parties sitting around this committee agree that they are the way forward. I think we might have differences of emphasis, but I think in general, we can work together in terms of making sure we get good schemes. But the key thing is we need to take local councillors with us. And I do not feel that for these early ones, we have taken local councillors with us. And I think that's the point, you know, councillor Ickbell and councillor Gamble-Pew have made. And I'm happy to support that. I mean, the residents I've spoken to have been very mixed. They've often wanted to talk about detail of the scheme. But I don't think we've got the arrangements right. I mean, you know, here we are, we've spent 45 minutes talking about a scheme that affects two wards and not all, well, okay, three wards, but not the other 25. And, you know, in my perfect world, this would be a matter for the Lacs to decide. But we're not there yet. We've got the constitution that as is, we're going to have to work closely with officers. I'm very pleased there's a meeting next week where we can go through in detail where we're up to, what the local people are saying and what the views of the local councillors are. And I think, you know, with that, I move to support councillor Ickbell's proposals.
Thank you. I think we have given it quite a good airing. In relation to the point you make about the governance committee, councillor Gamble-Pew, as chair of the governance committee, I hear you and I will just take that on board as the chair without us getting into a debate about that today. I think probably that's the easiest way to deal with that one. So the only thing we have left on the table is that we can request that officers, having heard our discussion this afternoon, take a pause. So is there anyone who is not happy with that? So that's just one member. So officers, we are officially asking you to consider a pause, please. That with you. Thank you. Yep. Okay. Christine, your position is?
I want to know what the pause is because I think what Craig Gamble-Pew was asking, councillor Gamble-Pew was asking for, was a pause on another ETRO, not the scheme. So I'm just confirming, is that what is?
I'll just clarify what I said. So we've got the existing scheme. So the measures that haven't been implemented need working with the local community, local councillors to get on with that. This new one that was proposed, we don't want that. That's what we're saying, that the new proposed ETRO. But from what Tom is saying, there is an opportunity to discuss with the councillors next week about just the school street element. So, I mean, for me, it is about the new ETRO. So the existing measures, it's working with, so we have some further conversations with that local community, both in Walkley and Crooks, about the existing measures, how we ensure that they're in. We've got that leading time, but not to bring any new ETRO that, in a sense, throws everything else in the air. So it's sticking with what we've got, because there's only a few months left, ensuring those interventions go in, local councillors are involved, business and residents are involved in that as well. That's the key bit. So no new ETRO.
I'm not going to take any more questions because we're already now into the meeting and we've not gotten to any substantive business. You've had the clarification, Christine, at this moment in time, if you want an abstention, unless you're telling me you are changing your mind. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for that. Item seven is the work programme. It's on pages 29 to 54. Sarah, I think you're introducing this, please.
Okay, so this is the work programme for the committee. It's a live document, so it belongs to you as members of this committee. So just some points to note, recommendations are set out at the top of page 30. I want to draw your attention to paragraph 2.1. These are the referrals which have come from full council on the 20th of July. And also, there are referrals from various local area committees in there. The proposed comments and actions are set out in there for you to agree. I'll draw your attention also to page 34. This is a council resolution that was made on the 20th of July concerning expanding on-street electric vehicle charging infrastructure. The proposal on that is to consider that resolution along with item 10, which is on your agenda today. The work programme also outlines items that will be brought to upcoming meetings. And this includes a special meeting that's been put in for the 3rd of November, which will consider the local plan. So officers are here to advise on any specifics you might want to know about anything in there. So I'll leave it at that, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Does anyone have any questions or comments on the work programme, please? Councillor Gamble-Pew.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it was just to note that in the section on items which don't have a date yet is the signing off of the decarbonisation route maps. I'll just-
Can you give us a page number?
Yes, it's on page 47. So I just wanted to just raise this and see whether we can actually get it so that these route maps can be produced and agreed within the scope of this municipal year, so that they don't lag any further.
Thanks. I think what would be useful potentially is for us to kind of have a, and I know we've had a full briefing on kind of the decarbonisation agenda in the round, that we've had a discussion this morning around some of the kind of resources and prioritisation in terms of the decarbonisation agenda. And that will directly influence and inform some of the final timetable for the route maps. I think members are already aware that we've kind of undertaken some prioritisation. And if we provide you with an update maybe at the next formal meeting on what that kind of timeline around the route maps looks like, that might give you some comfort in terms of what can be delivered within this municipal calendar.
Can I just come back? Yeah, just to clarify, I'm not asking that the route maps are implemented within the municipal year, but I'm asking that we see a final version of the route maps.
Yep. And fully, sorry, Chair, fully understand the question. I think what I'd like us to do is to work with you and to bring you an update in terms of what that route map, those route maps look like. There are four mentioned within that line on the forward plan, on the work plan. There are others that will go beyond this year. And there are some key issues around the prioritisation of these that we need to work with the committee on. So bringing you an update paper on that would be very helpful for us, I think.
I'm still unclear, sorry, Chair, I'm still unclear about whether we are going to get the route maps before this committee by the end of this municipal year. I would like to hope that we can get them. I'm not, I'm not clear whether we are or not. And I'd like to know whether we are.
Yes or no? Time, Tom.
But the answer to the question is, I think there's seven route maps in all. The answer to whether you get them all this, before the end of March, is no. Because we have identified that there are resource issues, that we need to prioritise the flow of those route maps. And there's also significant kind of strategic alignment with certain other things as well, say the housing, you know, growth plan. We need to kind of align the route maps so that effectively we're not just producing a route map for decarbonisation within one theme that then doesn't read and fit with wider strategy and position. So given that I've answered no, you won't get all of those seven route maps this, before March, if you want us to, we can have a discussion outside of the formal committee agenda about the prioritisation timeline associated with those. Or we can bring you a formal update at the next meeting. Or both.
I think probably it would be helpful at one of our informal meetings if we can have a discussion on that. So we can all get our heads around exactly where we are with them and the volume of work, I think, that is involved particularly. I think it's important that we get all the cross-cutting stuff right. Otherwise, there's little or no point in having route maps. So I think that would probably be helpful. Thank you. I've got councillor Sangor.
Yes, that, thank you, Chair. I mean, very much welcome the report. And clearly, a huge amount of progress has happened since the 15th of June. But there are, as, you know, councillor Gamble-Pew has just highlighted, still a very long list of things we want to talk about but are not yet on the agenda. Could I suggest that when we next meet, that list is much shorter? Would be my first point. My second point would be, so by short, I mean we have identified dates. My second point would be to agree with councillor Gamble-Pew that both the decarbonisation route maps and the monitoring of the 10-point plan are things that we really want to see. They're things, you know, that were slowed down because of Covid. And members are, members are very keen that we continue to talk about the fact that we've set a target of net zero by 2013. And that's not something we're going to forget about despite having to do other things on this committee. That remains a primary, a primary strategic task of the council and the city. And my third thing, Chair, would be to you in your role on governance committee, is just to reflect on whether all the other policy committees have quite as many items on their agenda. And is there anything we can do about rebalancing them? And as I say, that might mean about changing, about changing the way we work and what have you. And we might need extra meetings. But we do seem to have a very busy work plan, even as it currently stands between now and March. So I don't envy the task of you as, you and councillor Ickbell as co-chairs. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Sangor. Yeah, I think the work programmes is something that has already been flagged up with the governance committee. And I think it is something that we need to get right. My hope is it's because we're just in early days that we're still trying to work our way through these things. But I think it's important that we do get that right, absolutely. And I've got councillor Shaw next, please.
Thank you, Chair. I raised this at the last meeting we had. So page 49 of the work programme, the chief value cycle route proposals, which I believe said we would have something on that basically by this meeting. Now, of course, we've not had that. Given the deadline for the scheme, will this be coming up at one of our informal meetings instead, this presentation? Because it would be nice to have, it would be nice to have the presentation before the deadline of the scheme implementation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I agree. Can we manage that? We're getting a nod and a thumbs up. So yes, we'll make sure that happens. Thank you. Does anyone have any more points or comments on the work programme? If not, are we all happy to agree the four recommendations on page 30, please? Yes? Thank you, members. That's good. Item eight, the budget proposals, obviously, we're going to move that to the end of the agenda. So that takes us to item nine, which is the revenue budget monitoring month for... Ryan, thank you. Good afternoon.
Afternoon, Chair. Thank you. And once again, I'm Ryan Keyworth. I'm director of finance and commercial services at the council. A brief update really for this committee. So the overall month four position on the general fund revenue budget for the council is an overspend of £21.7 million. That's a relatively similar position to the last few months and no major changes. We've now incorporated our best estimate of the pay award for staff for this financial year. That's not finalised yet. Trade unions are currently consulting with members and balloting members in some cases on that pay award. So it won't be finalised until my best estimate is mid-November at the earliest. But we've built those numbers in. For this committee, the position is broadly balanced and a small overspend last time. For this committee, the position is broadly balanced and a small overspend last time, more than to spend this time. We have been able to use some one-off funding to basically deal with the two point one million pounds shortfall in clean air zone savings that was included in the budget last year, but it is one-off. It effectively pushes the problem into the discussion that we're going to have later on on the revenue budget for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. But it does make it, it solves the issue if you like for this year. Chair, I'm not proposing to say any more than that. Obviously I'm happy to take any questions that members have.
Thank you. Ryan, councillor Sangar.
Yes, yes Chair, and thank you for that. I mean, very pleased to see the spending, the action on clean air zone in terms of finding the money from reserves because I think most of us felt it was never something that should be sat on this committee. It was a strategic priority of the council. So very pleased that we've got a resolution. Could you just explain in terms of how this will play out in terms of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget and when we get, when we get the funding from government department on this? Because sure, the whole reason for going for clean air zones is it's a partnership arrangement between the council and the government.
So as part of the twenty-two, three budget, so this year's budget, council approved a saving proposal to use the income that we expected to generate from the clean air zone. So that is from penalty charging notices for people or payments that people make to drive non-compliant vehicles within the zone to deliver a saving to the organisation. I mean, it's worth obviously bearing in mind that this is not, it never was going to be a money-making scheme. This is about improving the quality of air in the city and therefore improving the lives and life chances of young people who whose health is affected most by air that is below the standard required. The Clean Air Zone project and the implementation of it is a partnership. The government pays significant money to the council to deliver the scheme, both in terms of capital resources to implement the infrastructure, the cameras, the towers the cameras sit on and so on. And also significant funding in terms of mitigation for certain types of vehicles that need it in order to continue to operate. So that scheme still stands as the direction that we have from government. It's still the scheme that we have on the table. What we are yet to do is I think agree a final implementation date for it. I'm conscious that officers sat opposite me know far more about this and if I can trouble them to pick up where I've left off, I'd be very grateful.
Thanks, Chair. So, so yes, at this time, we have our scheme approved by government. The business case that was submitted earlier in the summer has been approved. Additional funding for the implementation, as Ryan's outlined, has been provided. We are currently awaiting confirmation or a response to a letter that the Chair has sent to ministers seeking some flexibility on the twenty point four million pounds that we have for those financial support measures. We understand that that response is imminent and, you know, we're seeking some additional flexibilities to provide certain fleets with additional financial support, which, again, we're very conscious we want to launch as soon as we can. In terms of the kind of launch of the actual clean air zone, our current position on that is that we are agreeing those dates at the moment. The position we're in is that it will be early spring next year in terms of the scheme going live. That is the case that has been presented to government in terms of it will be early twenty twenty-three to achieve that compliance within that annual year of which we, that's our determination as to whether we are compliant with our legal direction. So that's the current position around the scheme. And in terms of the financial position around budget next year, I think that's on the item eight that is later on in terms of the agenda.
Thank you both. Councillor Rick Bowles?
Yeah, I mean, I'm glad to see that, I'm glad councillor Sangar asked that point. I do find that this is unfair pressure on the service. The bit that I still fail to understand is that something that hasn't happened for whatever reason, and I'll come to that in a sec, to put a financial pressure on that start date without something there, I just don't understand that. I just think it's completely unfair. I'm glad we found the resources to cover that. But the wider point for me, Chair, is that the government is failing to recognise that there is a cost of living crisis. So just before a decision was taken, we wasn't in a cost of living crisis, we are now. And I'm grateful that this committee supported the letter you put to government. But the second one is back to what we were discussing earlier, public transport. We can have a huge mode shift. Every vehicle out there could be electric, for example. It doesn't take away the pressure of congestion and everything else. So fundamental to delivering a clean air zone and some of the schemes that we are developing or looking at implementing relies on a good public transport that works for everybody across the city. But at this moment in time, I hope government do heed our call to support those businesses that need the extra cash to make that transition. But the key bit for me as well is Chair, is public transport. And if the government is asking us to, in a sense, take these schemes in isolation without the key plank to this, which is public transport, then how do they expect it to work? So it's not a question to our offices, it's a question to the minister. Put your hand in your pocket and get public transport systems sorted. So it's not a council issue, it is a government issue. And they need to equip the mayor, give him the resources so we have a proper functioning public transport system that is affordable and reliable. Thank you, Chair.
Any more questions or comments? Okay, we have one recommendation on page fifty-five. Are we all happy to agree that, please, members? Yes? Thank you. Item ten is the electric vehicle public charging infrastructure update and short-term plan. Tom, I think you're back on again, yeah?
I'm going to, Chair, hand over to Jenny Wood, who's one of our senior transport planners, just to take us through a brief introduction to this. Thanks.
Thank you, Jenny. Good afternoon.
Hi, it's Tom Sallant. I'm Jenny Wood, senior transport planner at the council. So this report provides an update on the provision of public electric vehicle charging infrastructure in Sheffield and seeks endorsement of the council's current position and agreement to be carrying out of the short-term action plan. It also seeks agreement that the submission of funding bids for governments' on-street residential charge point scheme and/or local electric vehicle infrastructure fund will be consistent with this position and the short-term actions if agreed. There's a number of frequently asked questions in relation to the council's current position on electric vehicle charging infrastructure that are set out in appendix A and will be updated on the website, subject to endorsement by the committee. In addition, to progress the rollout of the electric vehicle charging infrastructure for a number of actions that are needed in the immediate future, including engaging with the private sector to secure additional investment via a concession model and roll out charging options, including residential destination and hub charging in the city, as well as bidding for the funding aforementioned. Thank you. Have to take any questions.
Thank you. Councillor Gilligan?
Thank you, Chair. This isn't specifically about the electric vehicle charging infrastructure. It is just about the climate impact assessment, which I notice on many of the papers that we're getting today has not been undertaken. I also appreciate there may be reasons for this, but I do think that as a committee with climate change in our title and as a committee responsible for monitoring and bringing about the net zero in the city, it's really important that we're very open about climate change impact assessments. So I would like all reports to either have a full one and explain what the climate impact assessment is of the report. And if there's a reason why not, then to have a reason why not, because I just think it gives us public credibility if we do that.
Thank you.
We worked with the officers involved in developing the climate impact assessment on this report and undertook an overview impact assessment, which they felt was sufficient in terms of a strategic policy position paper. Because the way the climate impact assessment tool works, it works really for assessing a project. And as this paper isn't a project, the tool wouldn't work specifically to give those numbers, et cetera, to the paper as it stands in this case, which is why it was undertaken as the bullet point list within the report.
So I think that's something that needs flagging on the front of a report in future then, so that we all understand that, and more importantly, members of public, understand that it's not something that we've forgotten, that the appropriate measures have been taken at that stage in the project. That'd be helpful. Thank you. Councillor Mazurou?
Yeah, it's just a comment really on the equality implication on page seventy-three, four point one point one. It says there should be a positive impact for disabled people and poverty and financial inclusion. I'd really question the latter part of that on poverty and financial inclusion when car ownership of any type is heavily skewed towards higher income households and EVs are really expensive.
Sorry. We talked it through with the EIA assessment officer with the view that this paper was not about introducing electric vehicles, as that is a policy that the government have introduced to take the move towards electric vehicles, rather supporting the community who don't have access to off-road parking with being able to access the infrastructure to allow them to charge their vehicles if they don't have off-street parking, for example, which is where that is sort of coming from, if that makes sense.
Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the, thank you for the report. I mean, I'm pleased to see, you know, on page, well, sixty-nine, seventy, that, you know, it's ruling out having cables and such, like trailing across pavements and acknowledging that, you know, concerns that people have. I mean, another concern that people, users of wheelchairs or, you know, mobility scooters or other issues are where charging infrastructure is provided and, you know, obstructs or reduces effective width of pavements or, you know, reduces access. So, yeah, irrespective of the review of the accessible charging specifications when that comes out, could we have a reassurance and almost a guarantee that if and where any charging infrastructure is provided, there will be no detrimental impact on people with, you know, needs or, you know, users of mobility aids and so on? Could we have that assurance?
Through the Chair. So thank you for that point. It really is a very important point, which the position paper today tries to kind of establish, that key position. So a number of places have introduced charging infrastructure on footways, which has impeded some of that space. What we're going to be looking at very carefully is any implications associated with accessibility for the future rollout of charging. So the kind of protection of suitable space on footways or the provision of infrastructure in the highway that we'll be looking at that very carefully, absolutely.
Councillor Mazurou?
Yeah, page eighty-nine. I'm wondering which vehicles would continue to get free parking and why that would be, considering the budget pressures that we're under?
In terms of the review of the free parking restrictions, a separate paper would need to be undertaken, looking at how and why and which vehicles might. It was more introducing that it could be considered in terms of the government have removed the plug-in grant for cars where they feel that that has reached market maturity, whereas, for instance, that hasn't happened yet for things like LGVs and taxis, where they're still a little bit further behind in that journey. And I think it would be case for the future paper that is put forward to consider if that should be applied to any of those vehicles or not going forward.
Thank you. Okay, we have five recommendations on page sixty-four. Are we all in agreement with those, please, members? Yes? Thank you for that. Item eleven is the Shelsmore Gateway. Tom, is that you or Matt? Matt, thank you.
It's me, Chair. Good afternoon, everybody. Matthew Reynolds, Transport Planning and Infrastructure Manager at Sheffield Council. So the paper in front of you today is about Shelsmore Gateway. It is an update report on where we are with the current business case process. And we've just finished the outline business case, which is due to be submitted to the Department for Transport to draw down some funds from the major road network allocation, which is currently sat with the Department for Transport. Just to kind of give a bit of a background to the project, it was kind of conceived about five years ago through the Housing Infrastructure Fund. What later happened then was that fund was actually unsuccessful. But what it demonstrated was that there was, if all the growth is to be built in and around this area of the city centre, there is significant work required to this section of the outer, of the inner ring road going outwards towards the motorway. And as a result of that, due to its strategic alignment, not only did the DCLG at the time, but the DFT, Department for Transport, also pick this up as a major intervention. So it has developed since then. We got some confirmation from the previous cabinet member to develop the outline business case and this is this completion and obviously ready to submit it to the DFT. Now, in terms of the strategic alignment, it's got a very, very strong case, as you can imagine. It ties directly into the levelling up agenda, the type of intervention we're trying to propose in there. It's not just a highway scheme, but we're integrating sustainable urban drainage to capture as much rainwater and runoff which comes down the hill in towards the River Don. So it's a flood resilience project as well. It also helps unlock significant amount of housing growth. Eight thousand homes, particularly just in this area itself. But also crucially, in terms of its true kind of transport credentials, it builds network resilience into a very delicate area of the highway infrastructure within the city. Now, one thing which has moved on since then is how we develop and how we manage these projects. And as I said, it's not just a highway scheme. We are doing an incredibly balanced approach. The ring road is important. It carries significant traffic. It carries traffic around the city. But to the M1, it also goes to the Northern General Hospital as a blue light route on one side and a blue light route to the Holland Hospital on the other, as well as kind of feeding all those businesses with access for freight, et cetera, into some of those workshops. So with that said, we are looking to see how we can make it more resilient from a network management perspective. But we've also been able to play around with some of those historic highway alignments down there. So making the links more fluid. We're looking at how we can actually physically put in bus priority within the junction, which is in the current scheme design, as well as through use of technology, through changes to the junction and signal arrangements at the Shelsmore roundabout itself. And then in addition to that, it complements the connecting Sheffield programme works down at Kellam Island. So taking or giving active travellers, pedestrians and cyclists, the opportunity to come off the A sixty-one Peniston Road and feed into the connecting Sheffield project through Kellam Island. The other thing which the modelling demonstrates is that it redirects significant numbers of traffic which is diverted away from the ring road to avoid the queues and congestion. So the traffic modelling has shown that that traffic which is avoiding the ring road to go down quieter, less suitable residential streets is brought back to the ring road as a result of this scheme. So essentially it's trying to port traffic where it probably should be in the first place. In terms of its costs, we're currently looking at construction value of twenty point seven million. This includes all development costs, includes the cumulative sum, it also includes construction contingency and inflation rate of seven point five. and inflation rate at seven point five percent. Within that, twenty point seven is, is our three point four million pound financial contribution to the development of the business case. That is obviously taken through and is our fifteen percent match to the, to the DFT's allocation. The BCR, this is the benefit cost ratio, the critical figure which tells civil servants whether this is a good idea or a bad idea, is incredibly strong. It's over five, so for every one pound invested in this project, it delivers five pound back in benefits. That is huge. Normally, good value money is at two, this is at five. So this obviously demonstrates that there's significant benefits to be had by introducing this project and carrying on to full business case. The other thing I would just say is that this is prelim design. There is obviously still more work to do on it and that's something which we have picked up on. We've had some good engagement with all statutory consultees. But one, one element which we recognise the scheme could be strengthened on is how it ties into the active travel link which goes along Peniston Road, particularly how it integrates with the proposed light controlled crossing which has been longstanding with a request from many travellers of that route across Rutland Road and how it then feeds into the Kellam Active Neighbourhood. So one thing which we'll be looking to do as a, as a first, as a first port of call to the next stage of design is have a look into that. We have a workshop established with the DFT in about two weeks, Department for Transport, in about two weeks' time to how we pick up the, the change in policy direction of integrating particularly active travel. Active Travel England will be part of that discussion and we're using that as an opportunity to really emphasise how this scheme can benefit the wider delivery of that complementary projects around all travel needs of the highway. So in terms of the, the recommendations, we're proposing that we, obviously today, we, we collectively endorse the work. We continue to full business case, which requires a submission to the DFT. And note, and this is critically important, that the TRC, this committee here, will have a critical role in its future endorsement and that's something which obviously I'm keen to work with everybody on and getting that over the line. And then obviously, the key bit there is actually us submitting the business case and bringing that, bringing that commitment from program entry to a confirmed scheme with, within the Department for Transport. Thanks, chair.
Thank you very much, Matt. Anyone got any questions or comments, please? I've got councillor Mazurou, then councillor Ickbell.
Thank you, chair. If I could come back for a comment later?
I'm sure I said councillor Mazurou first.
Oh, did you? Sorry.
Pay attention, pay attention. Ladies first.
Thank you. One question and one request, please. So I'm aware that Cycle Sheffield had some concerns about this. Is the current design, has it been changed as a result of Cycle Sheffield's objections? That's my question. My request, can members of the committee and ward councillors please have a walk around of the site so that we can understand it better, please?
So on your last point? Absolutely. Yeah, that would be great. I think it's always helpful to get down on site and have a, and have a look to see how it actually fits together. It also picks out potential quick wins as well and little bits which we didn't think about, so absolutely. In terms of the Cycle Sheffield kind of correspondence, I've, I've been speaking to representatives of Cycle Sheffield. We also took to Cycle Forum, councillor Mr, you were there. And one thing which we're keen to do is obviously work through each one of those objections and kind of, shall we say, suggestions of the project. Now, we have spoken to someone who represents Cycle Sheffield on great detail about each one of those bits. There are some bits which we can do, there are some bits which are just highway design standards and we can't do. But typically, as I said, one of the conversations we've got to help with the DFT is how we link into Active Travel England who will have an opinion on this. So we will obviously be doing that on a twin track basis, but I, I absolutely have no reservations about speaking in, in more closer detail with representatives from Cycle Sheffield. It's how we develop the scheme in a more holistic way, so absolutely.
Thank you.
I didn't quite catch the last, but did you say you've been in communication with Active Travel England about this already?
Yes, we have. Yeah, 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 we have.
And have they given feedback already of that?
So it, it was an informal conversation with, with a, I'm not going to tell you who it was in Active Travel England, but it was a very senior representative when we had the cycle conference here. And their position was for an MRN scheme, this is incredibly well balanced. You know, to have that level of cycling structure already included within an MRN scheme because, remember, this was a fund which was done way before the creation of Active, Active Travel England and when it was really about highway capacity, we've obviously, on a local level, this needs to be more inclusive and, and kind of voluntarily put that thing, put those elements into the project. Now, there were bits of tweaking, absolutely, there always is, and those bits have been taken on board, not within this current design because that's almost a design freeze for submission of the business case, but that's the sort of stuff which we can feed in within the fuller completion of the business case and obvious submissions for FBC.
Thank you. councillor Ickbell, thank you for your patience.
Apologies, chair. Forgive me. Intended. I mean, I, I support the, the ask for a walkabout. I think it just makes sense. I'd like to, to go out. Just some clarification for me. On the, on page two, on the recommendations at the bottom, it says, there's an, there's an allocation of the community infrastructure level of almost three million pounds. But then it also makes reference on page nine on four point two to an outlined allocation of three point four. So two, two questions, chairs. You just need to understand the figures and the decision-making process when that decision was taken. And alongside that is the MCA, the Mayoral Combined Authority, also making a, a contribution to the, the business case.
So this is a, this is a locally defined scheme, councillor Ickbell, so it's come from the council. The, the MCA doesn't have a role in this project. In terms of those figures, the three point four million was allocated from the corporate investment fund and that, that was set around the submission of the HIF bid in two thousand and eighteen and that was basically fifteen percent match to develop the business case for the bigger twenty million pound project. Now, what's been spent so far is for about four hundred and forty on the development of the outline business case, which is what's got us to this point, and then the rest of the money will be spent on development of the full business case, which is about one point, just under one point five million pounds. But then the rest of that will be our other contributions and things like our commuted sum and, and also some, some money towards the risk and contingency plus the construction value. So it's just how we capture our fifteen percent match to the Department for Transport.
Comment at the end or not? Yeah, I was going to say that, that three million pound leave us in over twenty million pounds, which is, is amazing. It'd be nice if the MCA put their hand in their pocket, but just on the scheme, chair, I think it's needed. As it says in the, the report, it helps the, the city moving not just vehicles but pedestrians, cyclists and trams being replaced. Hopefully, we'll have some signs and ensure, as we, we'll have all been, picked up the two accident cycle cyclists that were injured on, on the, the trams. I think there's an issue there. I don't know if it's signage and when we replace, it's important that we, we take that on board. But also, it releases much-needed housing, so it provides the infrastructure to, to bring much-needed housing into the city. So for me, a great scheme, chair, so welcome this and thank you to, to our small team because of total years of cuts. I mean, it's incredible the amount of schemes that our officers are involved in. So if we can, I'd like to see if we can build some capacity within that team because a lot of this stuff is definitely needed in the city. So if you could pass on our thanks to, to your colleagues. Thanks, chair.
Thank you. I've got councillor Chaplin, then councillor Shaw, then councillor Auckland.
Thank you, chair. The, the map next to page twelve on an A four page with its very small print does, doesn't really do the scheme justice when you see it on, on a laptop and you can, you can expand the picture. But a colleague just now was talking about the cyclists, but in terms of the public transport users, does it bring the, the bus stops closer to the, to the tram stop? I'm just trying to figure out where that would be on the, on the map because I'm now looking at the A four map.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, councillor Chaplin. I think one thing which we'll say is that if you're going to, if you type Shelsmore Gateway into Google and go on the council pages, you can download the full image and you can play around with that. So that's for everyone to know. I appreciate on an A four, it's very tricky. Yeah, one thing which we're trying to do is the, is the integration between buses and tram and obviously how it all links together. So what we're looking at on the, kind of the Infirmary Road access is the creation of the bus gates. There would be bus-only routes in and we're looking to see whether we can fit a bus stop around there. So that would bring it significantly closer. And it's a matter of detailed design. This is still prelim design, but one thing which we're obviously keen to do is look to see how we can improve that in the future. So you've mentioned that today, I've made a note, we'll put it in a key client requirement for how the next stage of design works.
Yeah, if we can just come back, because one, one of the current problems is that there, there are two bus routes that go out towards Foxtel and Grennyside. One's the one three five and it can stop, but you still have to walk back if, say, you, you wanted to use the tram. And the, and the eighty-six currently doesn't stop anywhere near because the drivers have trouble pulling out to get back onto Peniston Road. So they're very reluctant to use that stop as it, where it's placed at the moment.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and actually, what I should have said and I forgot was that we spoke to Substron about this and one of the issues which they have in operation is that this is often a place where they would terminate tram vehicles. So when it comes to rail replace, bus replacement for the tram, one of the things we want to do is try to get that bus stop as close to the tram stop as possible. So we're also looking to do that as well.
councillor Shaw, then councillor Auckland, please.
Thank you, chair, and thank you, Matt, for, for the report. Some of my comments have already been touched upon. So in the, in the section on the, like consultations, so it says, like, suggestions and things that would be, like, taken forward to, like, design stage. Have there been any notable comments, objections, suggestions that this, what we're being asked to note and propose would preclude that, you know, that can't be changed later? And then my, my next question is, on, like, Active Travel England and other bodies that have asked for advice and stuff, will we get the feedback back in, in, in time? Is there like a, a, a deadline and when that does come, can it be incorporated? Thank you, chair.
So on the last point, councillor Shaw, the ATE feedback, we, we expect we'll be having that direct dialogue with the Department for Transport. I will certainly be asking that question. It will need to feed into here at some point. It's a twenty million pound project. I'd be surprised if Active Travel England aren't interested in it. So we will personally be picking that one up. I think the other thing to say, and it, and it comes from councillor Ickbell's comment, we have asked Combine Authority, Combine Authority for some money. They couldn't provide that, but what they did provide was officer resource. So we had a conversation with the Active Travel Commissioner to see specifically on this project. That's another way in which we can try to capture any Active Travel specific comments. It may not be from ATE, but it might be from the commission, the Active Travel Commissioner for the region themselves. But obviously also, we, we will be working within the LTM one-twenty, which is the new design code. So that should pick that one up, but we will be kind of hounding the DFT for specific feedback. In terms of the design checks, I'll, I'll have to take that. The, the, the Cycle Sheffield response must have had fourteen bullet points on it. I'll have to go through each one of those fourteen bullet points. I don't propose I do that now, but we can pick that up later. But in terms of those, those specific requirements which we are going to take forward, it's things like how we can better segregate the Rutland Road crossing, how we can better align it on the north side into the cycle route going towards Hillsborough. And then it's how we manage that, the shared space slash cycle street which connects from Rutland Road down onto Cornish Street. So the connection into the, into the, the Kellam Island area. And one of the other bits which has come up is, is, is another crossing which is currently not in the proposal but on the south-southeast side of the junction towards kind of the, the route which would take up scope to the University of Sheffield. So that's one which has, which has come through as well and some which we'll, we'll take forward through the next stage of design. So those specifics.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, chair. I think this is a very necessary scheme. It out, it unlocks development in the city centre and that's a very sustainable location. So we certainly have to do that. I remember it in its original proposal and I just wonder how this one has, has changed in summary and if it was in there of mistake. And what I remember out of the first scheme particularly was it delivered very significant public transport improvements. Some of the biggest I've, I've seen when you said, like, I could take them over a full day. So I just wonder if this one, hopefully, we'll still have some public transport to shout about going forward, but does it still deliver similar or better improvements to public transport reliability, things like that? Thank you, chair.
Yes, councillor Auckland, it, it still delivers quite significant improvements to public transport. We can draw them out through, and I haven't got the figure exactly, but it's all detailed within the analytics of the, of, of the business case. So we can pull that one out. But yes, it does. The network resilience, one of the issues we have around this junction is that at peak times, certainly prior to Covid, but also very similar as you probably experienced today, is that the, the resilience of that network is, is very unstable. So we just need one vehicle breakdown or one thing not quite working and we have the network collapses all the way around the Ring Road. This is one area where that impact is actually quite significant. With all the buses using that network, it, it chips away at the benefit which has been there for public transport along that link. What this does, it introduces the bus priority at those particular places. So coming southbound into the, the round, into the old roundabout, there's now a bus bypass. That should help quite significantly. And then we've got the convoluted situation where buses going left, going right onto Infirmary Road, go on different routes. Well, actually, when we had, when we were doing, doing the design workshop, we had drivers from First Bus and Stagecoach come in, the ones that actually do the route and say, this doesn't work, this doesn't work. And we had their lived experiences to what the issues were. This is what holds us up, this what doesn't, this is what you could do. So we fed that as much as we can into the proposal as well, as well as integrated into the signal technology. So the signals here will detect when there's a late running bus etcetera and give that priority through. The other thing I would say, and, and this is kind of, it's not in the report because when, we're, we're still waiting on what the scheme looks like, but you, members here will know that we've got the City Region Sustainable Transport Settlement. One of the schemes in there is the A sixty-one North, which has been put into, to dovetail into this project and that is a bus priority scheme. So this is where I'm trying to get people to look at this scheme, not just in its isolated position as a former roundabout, but actually how it fits into a much broader network. So that, that CRSDS scheme coming into public transport feeds into this, which then feeds into everything else. And then the Active Travel link goes into the existing amazing stuff round at Greater Green, connects into the, the Nether Red Connect and Sheffield scheme, and then also the CRSDS scheme we've got going up into the northern communities towards Northern General Hospital. So all this is all going on at the same time. We've obviously got lots of plates to juggle and it's making sure it all aligns together. But that's definitely something which, which is very, very much at the forefront of the design requirements.
We've been about what, what's changed. We had a strong case.
Yeah.
We have a better case, I take it now.
Yeah, sorry, yeah. So, so the first design which you would have seen was something which, I'm, I'm going to be completely frank here. As a, as a traffic engineer, I wouldn't have taken, it was too risky, there was too much design risk with it. There was, there was things proposed in there which weren't standard. They would require DFT, special dispensation. This scheme has been developed in a way in which we still balance the deliverability of the project against the benefits which we're trying to realise and something which we think is more suitable to kind of current highway use and how people would respond to the new design. So the scheme which I picked up had significant sets of traffic light infrastructure which is not really, well, for, for a road like this, it would be complicated for a user and would, would bring in significant risk. And I don't think it was really delivering on any of the, kind of the journey time benefits which drive that BCR to, to five. So fresh piece of paper was pulled out and some fresh thinking was done. The report does have an optioneering, an option to pay as a report, an OAR. That will be submitted to the DFT and we'll be hosting that online with all the other documentation. So you can see how we've got to the kind of scheme which we've got to in the moment. And that should hopefully answer, answer your question, councillor Auckland.
Thank you, Matt. We have four recommendations on. We have four recommendations on page two of this report, are we all happy to agree them please? Thank you. I think, just one comment from me, I think, you know, the way all of these schemes fit together is really, really exciting, it's great for the city, but I think when we do do consultation, we need to make sure that we are giving people the whole overview, so that people do get the proper context of what they're looking at, I think that's, you know, something that's really important that we do, but yeah, good scheme, thank you. Item 12, is that you Tom, School Streets?
Thank you Chair, it is, and given time, if it's okay with you Chair, there's nothing further to add to the content of the report, so I wonder whether, happy to answer any questions, but whether you want to move to recommendations.
I'm very happy to do that, but councillor Rick Bell's going to ask us something.
The reason I raise my hand Chair is that we've got two petitions coming, there's two requests, a bit small, for School Streets, and I just thought, I know we've got nine schemes on the go, it would be just helpful as part of that context setting, if we could somewhere in the next report, have some context setting in the schemes that we're already involved in, what's the forward plan, but really welcome this, thank you Chair.
Thank you Chair. Councillor Rick Bell, that's fine, we'll certainly bring that forward, this report is principally around the first four trial schemes that have been in, and the experimental TRO, if I can mention that, and the objections that we've received to two of the schemes, so in light of our kind of process, we bring those objections to you for full consideration, they're attached in the appendix, and the decision is yours to make as to whether you accede to those objections, or whether, as it recommends in the report, that you consider those but agree to implement these schemes permanently, and that's for the first four. We'll bring you some further information around the programme, and obviously we'll be preparing a response to the petitions.
Thank you Tom.
Yeah, thanks Tom, and that goes for the next few items on the agenda as well, doesn't it, in relation to 20 mile an hour schemes? Are we happy to agree the two recommendations on page 93 please members? Yeah, thank you. So Tom, I think you're on real item 13, Manor Park 20 mile an hour.
Thank you Chair, again, same position, if it's okay with you Chair, nothing further to the report to add, clearly we, as you'll recall from the first committee, we had two reports on 20 mile per hour zones, and these present to you the recommendation to consider the objections received, but to move forward with the implementation of the schemes, and there's the report on Manor Park, and then the subsequent report as well, so.
Thank you Tom. There's just one recommendation on page 150, are we all happy to agree that please? Thank you. And then it's Hansworth 20 mile an hour scheme, Tom?
Thank you Chair, yeah, nothing further really to add than the report and the recommendation, 20 mile per hour zone, objections in front of you for consideration, but happy to answer any questions.
Can we all agree this one as well please? Thank you. Sorry, item 15, the local central disabled base at Woodhouse.
Thank you Chair, so this is again going to be a first of a series of reports that will come to committee around disabled parking spaces in local district centres, something that's clearly very important for the accessibility needs of people getting close to services and shops, we're presenting here the objections to, one of them which is at Woodhouse, and the recommendation that we move forward and implement, we have had no objections to a further space.
It's Darnall.
It's Darnall, apologies, that we haven't had any objections, so we can just take the decision to implement.
Councillor Rick Bell.
Thanks Chair, it was just a wider, I know me and councillor Sangar have raised this, and forgive me if this was picked up in the work plan or the governance, I mean, these schemes should be at a local area committee level where ward councillors are involved with their residents, so if we can through you Chair, when this governance review does take place, if this could be fed into, you know, schemes such as this, should be at that local level. Thank you Chair.
Yeah, thank you councillor Rick Bell. They do go out to award members, don't they currently, so award members do get sight on them, but I think it is something that sensibly we should be progressing along to our local area committees, so another one to put on my long governance list, thank you. Are we all happy to agree the recommendation please? Thank you. That brings us then to the final item on the agenda, which is agenda item eight, which we have saved for the end of the meeting. We need to note that the public impress be excluded from the meeting before discussions take place on this item of business, to be considered on the grounds that if the public impress were present during the transaction of such business, there would be a disclosure to them of exempt information as described in paragraph three of schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972 as amended. Are you all okay with that? I will ask Will to just give a brief presentation on the paper before we pause the recording. Thank you Will.
Thanks Chair, so just very quickly, members be aware that there's an ongoing budget work on it.
Okay, councillor Rick Bell, you wanted to make a comment, we are now back live streaming.
Yeah, I think there's many of us in this room Chair, this is the 13th year where we've been asked to cut public services even further, I mean, having looked at savings just not within our committee but other committees, it is a horror show, if the government is serious about levelling this city up, then it needs to level up public services, and for me Chair, I'm going to say I'm a bit optimistic, I hope there's something in the budget that supports local authorities, I welcome the six month energy support, but with the remaining public services, it's key, this city is to support its most vulnerable and deliver day-to-day services, then the government needs to support us, but like many other authorities, 13 years of cuts, enough is enough.
Thank you councillor Rick Bell, we have got five recommendations on this paper on page two, are we all happy to agree them please?
Yes to both of them Chair.
Yes, okay, thank you members, thank you officers for attending the meeting this afternoon, I now close the meeting, good afternoon.